I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic of which is founded by one nation, under the great liberty of which we have.
Welcome to the meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for public comment. Prior to Act 9, it's on the agenda. We ask speakers to notify themselves of their own district. We also ask for comments to be limited to three minutes. Work with everybody else, speakers. Ensure it's reasonable length. If you have any information that can be summarized that cannot be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board to view. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during session, may I ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after the meeting's adjourned? Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening? Motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? Disorder, donations. Do I have your...
No, I can read it from here.
I'm doing it.
The first donation is from Philip and Penny Pardis. They donated $1,646.59. And they've done this several times, but this is to clear the student lunch debt for the previous school year. I don't know how many other times they've done it, but they did it at the end of the ball smasher and then the end of the...
Do you know these people?
Penny grew up here and went to school with Jimmy. And as a thank you, we mailed them some of the nice Nike dry fit Panther beer.
All right, so they live in New Jersey?
Yeah.
Who read it? You what? I'm sorry.
Congratulations.
I didn't find this amazing.
Yeah. The second and last donation is from the Piedmont Greater Informed Community Network, and they donated personal hygiene items and snacks for CNA students.
Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from the June 12 school board meeting? Is there a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second? Second from Ms. Meyer, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. No? Disorder, Mr. Grove, did you have a chance to review the bills and paperwork?
Yes, I did. All in order.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, all in favor, aye? Aye. No? Disorder, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Well, the first report of the superintendent is a transportation update. You had asked last time that we gather some additional information, so we've done that. So I'll ask our Director of School Support Services, Mr. Tupper, back to the podium to share those updates.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So just as you look at the slides there, just kind of a review of what we did last month. Again, outlined the voucher system that we talked a little bit about and gave you the calculations again, how that came, how we came to those numbers. I know you've had a, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that for the last month, but any questions on how I basically, the miles per gallon was just something I used as a calculation. That wasn't, I didn't, I just figured most vehicles get at least that ma, MBG, except for my truck out there, it gets 16. And then, and then the next slide, basically, you had mentioned a voucher versus a stipend, so I calculated that out, and you see that that's, that $486 would equal the same, would be the same amount. So any questions so far? And then, the big one, which you had asked to look into, is just the maintenance of the cars, because this really is the nuts and bolts of what we've been bringing this issue up for, is we've got seven vehicles that buy, I don't want to say by code, we came up with a plan a year before I went back to the school office about the distance, what drivers qualified for a car. And basically, if their run was closer to their home, to their first stop in the morning, then they would be taking the bus home. So those drivers, when they, when they go after, in the morning, they come in and they leave their bus here at the bus shop, and then they take the car home. In the evenings, at their last stop, they go home with the bus. So we have seven buses out in the county in various places. I don't, I don't know, something I didn't say last time, I'm not sure how this got started. You know, I was around probably when it happened, but I wasn't a part of that, but I do recall years ago, there was a carpooling effort, and Mr. Mills, you may remember there was...
I do remember that.
It was, it wasn't a car for each person, it was a, you know, hey, if you guys park your car somewhere else in the county, this person will take the car and drop each person off, and they won't have as far to go home.
I remember then, it was a majestic nightmare.
Right, so, so there is some history that I'm not quite sure, but anyway, so if you look at the maintenance, the maintenance cost, you know, the seven drivers, the car's value, that's Kelly Blue Book, and that's generally, we get, we're lucky if we get that at an auction. We might get $250, yeah. I think this was an interesting, the fuel consumption alone, we forgot about, you know, that's, that's one, you know, they're Crown Vics, and they're, they were old police cars, and they're heavy, and they don't get great gas mileage. So you can see the expenditure on just gas alone, per vehicle, per year. Oil change, you know, you gotta at least do that once a year, you see the cost there. Any kind of brake work, wiper blades, sounds insignificant, but you gotta be able to see how true windshield was oriented. Any other safety repairs that come up like that. And the big ones here, we have two cars, Car 9 needs an exhaust, it's on its last leg, that's, that's 800 bucks. It needs a rear differential, $1,700, and a wiper motor assembly for $240. And Car 24 needs an automatic transmission, that's been laid up for some time, you see the cost of that. Rack companion steering in Car 14, anytime we need to buy tires, it costs around 600 bucks, and the insurance and registration for those vehicles is around $2,000. And then, the labor for all this, calculate, though, just those repairs would be about 30 hours of labor. And of course, we're dealing with older vehicles, so something big could fail on any of them any given day. Operating, we all drive cars, we know how quickly they can change. And then, in sum, summary, you see basically the comparison where, and Dr. Grinsley helped me out with this slide, so you can see the comparison of where, where the funds would be coming from if we did, if you guys decided to move forward on some kind of decision on what to do with these, these cars.
You gotta feel that.
I know it's become, as you all know, it's become, people have gotten used to having these vehicles, and it's, it changed.
It's basically part of the compensation at this point, for some.
Right, and I don't, you know, again, what I realized last time is, and a bus driver very graciously reminded me that they essentially come to work twice during the day.
Well, I think that's, that's their rationale for the whole thing, is they come to work twice.
They do come to work twice.
And they go home twice, or they go somewhere.
And if they didn't, they'd be driving our bus, they'd have miles, and that's not even on what a public car could be here.
The bus gets, what, six miles per day?
Yeah. The only, one of the big advantages, I just wanna, you know, from my, from Chris and Al, you know, during the school year, those seven buses, when they're parked outside different locations, when they have a problem, they gotta go get them. That means delay for that route. If they're all here, they can get that other bus ready to go, there's no delay. So from a student perspective, and I will say that two of the cars that we provided drivers could be used for student transportation, which we never have enough of those.
So this would free up, this would, we're gonna get rid of the trash cars that we don't want to fix, right? The part of this plan would be, we're gonna unload the cars that we don't fix, and then the decision needs to be made, I assume there's a decision, is there a decision that needs to be made by the board?
Well, it's a consensus, we just want to discuss this with you, because there's another thing with the buses too, having them on campus too, as a resulting of our safety plans and things.
True.
It's really difficult to maintain and surveil your buses when they're all off the county, and that really worries us too, as a security standpoint, so we've gotta get those back under our, you know, purview. But also, you're right, the cars that we're updating, there are a couple we could probably fix that would be put to good use for student transport still, and we're always kind of struggling with that, but only two, right?
Yeah, there's only two. Well, the third, the third one that we could possibly, it doesn't have a backseat, I learned this, this past year, that these police cars now, the backseat that they have is not very comfortable.
On purpose.
For a good, for a good reason.
Too much information, right?
Well, I had to go pick, I had to go pick up a student, I got to ride in the back, it was all good. No, no, this was all...
It was out much.
I did come up.
After we get rid of all the trash.
Get rid of the trash.
Keep two.
Keep two, that's the plan.
And move on with the stipend for all drivers.
I think we have concurrence on that.
I'd like to, I'd like to just say that I think there's one more car that we could use for, for in-office, in our office transportation, for people that go from building to building.
Not, it's not safe, right?
How do you get rid of it?
Well, you're keeping the two for student transportation, you're keeping the police car?
Right, that's, the newer one, yes.
But that's for you unload right off the bat, which is safer, significantly than that.
Hey, this is a, it's an economy way of doing things, and it also, I think, benefits drivers in a way.
They're getting a raise?
They're getting a little bit, they're getting a little bit extra, and they don't have to drive a bus home, which is...
And this will benefit all drivers, not just some.
That's correct, that's the equity behind it.
They have to come here and then go.
Sure.
And that was the objection when they came before.
But they didn't get compensated for...
Right. I just don't think you're in there for something.
Yeah, we might get a sense.
Oh, they're pleased.
Yeah.
But I think you can also couch it under the auspices of security. These buses are under security cameras all the time, are they under your home security camera? I don't think so.
And that's, that's the point.
And the maintenance, people are right there waiting when something goes wrong.
And it's something that will work within the budget that we currently have.
Absolutely.
But we're basically compensating ourselves, resetting money and changing...
Changing the money.
Well, if you look at that slide, the last one, you'd be saving, because right now, we're looking to spend about $15,000 on these upkeep, and $8,000 compensate all the drivers who are wear and tear, so you're already saving half, you know, right up to that, so...
All right, thanks for the work on that.
You're welcome, thank you.
So how are you gonna tell people, Mike?
That's a good question. I brought this issue up towards the end of the year, and had a few concerns that we all, well, I've mentioned to you. So I haven't thought that far ahead, but it certainly will let them know, probably either by meeting or by phone call.
You better get announcing when you may lose a few drivers, so they can get up an hour to an hour earlier to compensate. I was driving, I had early work, I said, well, thank you, but no thank you.
So I'll start contacting them once the decision's made.
Now, we planted the seed that this was a discussion topic, so it's not a surprise, it's not gonna be a surprise, it's been discussed, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we have an HVAC update, and I thought we'd meet our neighborhood-friendly Honeywell technician at this meeting, because he's been doing so much.
Hello?
So we've invited him here tonight to come to the podium and talk to you. We've been keeping him extremely busy since November, since he's come on with us, so I thought you could hear it straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, on what he's been doing, what he's found when he got here, and where we're going, and just, you know, we always have to hear our occasional guys talking to him. What do you got, Corey?
What are we looking at? Well, first, I'm Corey Peterson, like it says, I've been with Honeywell for a year, I've been in the trade for over 10 years, so I brought that experience here, and one thing I'd like to bring up is that this district is primed to be something that you can really educate kids on, because you have so many different HVAC equipment in here, almost every type of heat transfer equipment that is used in the trade is in this little district. So maybe we should start a program there, but, so coming on board, of course, I saw a lot of, a lot of problems from a couple different angles, mainly, I think there was a lot of not happening that was, thought was happening, so the dirty filters were huge and murderous to your guys' equipment. So cleaning, some of the cleanings that needed to be done were way past due, I mean, I was changing filters that had two years' old dates on, you know, so that caused a lot of damage, even at your home, it's enormous to change your filter, it's the cheapest part of the maintenance, and I don't mean going home to even pay $20 for a filter, don't do it. But, so with that in mind, it obviously caused many repairs needing to be done, up to replacing compressors, I mean, the high school gym that, if any of you were at the graduation, had to endure, and I apologize, I wish I could have gotten that up and running, but when I got to dig into that problem, it was way more issue than I was gonna be able to handle. This right here is actually the unit at the high school gym, and this is the culprit of what killed it. So I'm gonna walk over there, I'll still be loud enough to hear, promise.
These right here are what called metering device, and I'm not gonna be crazy on the technical, but I just want to show you how odd this is. This right here is a little capillary tube, okay, this goes down into here, and it gets wrapped on the outside of the copper pipe, all right, it touches the top somewhere in the 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock area, it gets insulated, and that way, this can sense temperature of that pipe, and then there's a refrigerant inside here that pushes up and down on a diaphragm. This little pipe here is the equalizing line. What that does is that gets plumbed in to the suction line, so this is the cold vapor line right here, this here and this here, and that's how this is able to talk to the compressor and say, all right, I'm gonna meter refrigerant like this or this, so the flow is going to change, okay, it's not just gonna be constant volume. That helps keep the compressor protected with superheat, and it also makes this more of efficient unit than just a fixed four piston, okay? What happened here was that they plumbed these equalizing lines into the correct pipes and swapped the balls. So what that does is it eliminates superheat, destroys our subcooling, and by doing that, we murder the compressor, we wash the oil out of the bearings, so now we got metal on metal, it's gonna overheat, and it's gonna kill the compressor, and most of the time it grounds it out, and you get what's called a burnout, that's literally acid, acidic, nasty, that will eat the winding and cause problems if you just take the compressor and put new ones in, it'll happen again. So we flushed the system to alleviate that. This should have been found on commissioning, guys, there's no way, there's, I'm sorry, there's one way, but I'll bet that that's not how it went. When you take a split system, it's two parts to make it, and you have to put all that pipe to make the refrigerator travel through, now you either can do two, one of two things, you can do the math, figure out the size of the pipe and the length of the pipe, and you gotta count all these little levels for five foot, all right? You take that math, and then you can say, all right, I need this much more refrigerant to make that happen. Or you do subcooling, that's what I chose to do, so that I, I'm outside, I'm putting the refrigerant in, I'm clamped onto the pipe, and I'm looking for 10 to 12 degrees of subcooling, which tells me that's how much heat I pulled out of the discharge, and now liquid's coming into here to feed in here to spray and make that really cold. You know, it's just evaporation, that's, that's what's chilling to us, that's why we sweat, right? So that's what's going on here. And I was trying to get the subcooling, and that number was in the dumpster, it was about three to four, didn't matter what I did refrigerant-wise, I should see differences change with refrigerant, was not changing. So, you know, after I threw a couple of them stones off the roof, took some windows out, and anger, no, I said, all right, let me go check inside, because something might be happening, and I knew these were TXVs. So I came in, and I looked at these, and I was just about to take this little cap off right here, which allows me to adjust how much that, that little needle's gonna be able to let go by and not. And I backed up, and I looked at this, and I said, let me just make sure this is right, I'm sure it is, wait a minute, maybe I'm wrong, and I looked at it like 17 times, and found, whoa, this is off. And so you have four compressors in just this one unit, and all four of them were killed by this. Now, that being said, it speaks volumes to Copeland, because what was this put in, 2008? And these things lasted through all that abuse? That's impressive. Now this running right, we should never change them again, we'll just change the filters, make sure the belt's moving the right amount of air into the refrigerant, so that this could be a unit, you don't have to say York's garbage, kind of thing. But there's a lot more going on throughout the district that I'm still trying to put fires out on, it's just gonna take time, and I understand that a lot of money is being spent, but it's not being frivolously spent. I mean to own everything I touch, and to be truthful with you, more so than I treat my own home unit, I'm just like an auto mechanic, I'll deal with them in breaks. But when it comes to this stuff like this, I take my customary serious, and because there's children in this whole game, I take that even more serious. So we mean to see the end of this, and we'll be able to look at a future plan for maybe building automation one day, you know, so that you can look at your whole school on a front-end system, and if you had something coming up, you could plan right on the computer, all right, we want to drop the temperature in the gym because we got a huge event, you can do it right from a computer, and then it'll auto reset back to schedule, things like that, we'll be, we'll be able to look at those as viable options, but there's no sense in that until the mechanicals are actually taking care of the rooms, you know, we've already gotten to a point where Rob doesn't call me every single day, you know, because it was when I first came onto this job, I'd come out here to start looking at units, and I couldn't touch the units, I mean, literally, because I'm going, fire, 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 I mean, I was, I was getting yanked all over the place. So now, I've been able to come out here and just say hello, see ya. So we are, we're moving forward, it's going in a positive direction, and if you could just bear with me, I will get this school in the best standing and as close to the way the OEM manufacturer designed these units to run, which is what I see the most efficiency out of. We'll get money back also on energy costs too, eventually, so we'll get there.
It seemed like for years, Corey, we've, you know, we've gotten quotes, we've built buildings, we've got AC in, it's always, the choices we always got forced into making were not good long-term decisions. They were always, get it done, cheapest we can, I remember the old gym in particular, when that thing went off, it's all cut and quarter, cut and quarter, cut and quarter, all those bar units that are, you know, at every window, we were all cringing when we said, yep, let's get it done, and we've done a lot of these solutions that I think are short-term, and you see, you know, that you set varieties of system here, I'm not surprised. And so I know that in the long term, I appreciate the fact that we're putting energy in, trying to figure out how to make them all run optimally, but we need to remember that we duct taped things for a long time, and when we did make choices, we weren't making choices that were good long-term choices, they were always, at least for the last 20 years, short-term thinking. So hopefully, we've heard that corner, Steve. It's just good for the public to be aware of those, how the decisions were made, they were driven, you know, by the reason.
The positive of all this is, once we get everything on that list fixed, which is happening this summer, it's all on the company's. So once those are all operating, because one of those, both new units went, one wasn't and one was, so we had to pay for one unit, the other's on the company's, because it was running when they came on board.
I think you used that to...
Scott.
Surely, we didn't choose to have it wired incorrectly, did we?
Well, yeah, we wanted one to name.
Who installed it that it would be backwards?
Yes.
And why didn't we not speak with these people?
It was 10 years ago.
Yeah, you're kind, you're pinned now, there is nobody in this trade that goes out there and uses more than a year after touching it, even really at home, that's the case. Manufacturers won't give you a year more on their mechanicals.
I understand the warranty, but that's, that's a default in trade.
And actual workmanship, that's...
Yeah, that would be up to the company.
That's the brakes on backwards, that's the, the bearing's missing, that's not the machine itself as a warranty, that's the actual installer is faulty.
Well, and that, that unfortunately is really the, that's how the trade's driven right now, is you'll, you're one of the people, and they'll say, oh, train's garbage, equipment's garbage, they blend manufacturer equipment, because they have a number of problems, most of the time, and I'm talking in the 90 percentile, that is because the installation is incorrect. What, you can't just come to your home and say, hey, oh, you need a new unit, yeah, well, yeah, we had a three-ton unit, well, that's what you need now. Well, what have you done to the house? Do you need a three-ton unit, do you need a two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half ton? Oversizing stuff's gonna make a problem, then you have to change the ductwork to work with that unit, you can't just throw units in the ductwork because it's already there. So, and that, that happens in commercial even worse, it's even more so that way, because like he just said, cut corners, cut corners, cut corners, and they go, well, we can, we can, we can, and then they keep doing it, and then the equipment suffers. Now, when you first put equipment in, it's more resilient, because it's brand-new, it'll take more abuse, just like an 18-year-old kid can take a lot more abuse than a 40-year-old kid. So it's the same thing, I know what you're saying, but the, I mean, you could go to, whoever, whoever, what, Southern?
Might be more costly going out there.
You can go to them, but I mean, they're gonna say, no, we're not.
We didn't do that.
Well, and a lot of times too, the board gets locked into things because of budgetary implications and what you had to work with, this largely was made possible because the Board of Supervisors allowed us to reallocate money that we were going to dedicate back. Because they were able to do that, we were able to get a lot of this done over the summer without children here, within your current working budget, so that was a huge deal, that would not have been possible, we'd probably be running into the same conversations, where, whoa, we can't afford that, what can you do? And that's...
I just know as a part of building projects, when we take them along, we are typically cutting corners, and a lot of times, and you're... And that's what happens on maintenance contracts too, with, with commercial anything, they, that's the first thing that gets cut, and then, a lot of times, when I was at the prior company, I would see people leave, and then two years to three years later, they come back, and they came in, our place is a shambles, can you guys get us on the run again? And that really doesn't save any money, because once you start replacing compressors, you're easily getting close to 10 grand, right out of the gate, and you could have just changed filters for, you know, 400. Do you know off the top of your head what, Big Sunday Gym, cost us?
$14,000.
14?
As opposed to what we thought was gonna be 56, right?
I mean, I was expecting a hundred percent of that.
And then one of them's covered, so we only paid for one, and Honeywell covers the...
Oh, so probably it was actually...
So it should have been $30,000.
Yes.
Yeah, not...
Yeah, not, 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 not cheap stuff. Thank God that thing's a four-ten-eight unit and not an R twenty-two, that would've been worse. Once you have a burnout, that refrigerator's shot, you can't reuse it. And the newer refrigerants, since they fractionate, they're harder to reuse than like an R twenty-two. R twenty-two is the same vapor as it is liquid, whereas four-ten-eight is not. Once it's vapor, it's three different refrigerant mixes. Each of them have temperature pressured, uh, properties and one'll leak out faster than the other. You just change the chemistry of the refrigerator and then your needle's gonna be looking like this hunting because it's just not the right chemical makeup. Silver lining.
Thanks for, is he here?
Is he asleep? Is he just here for it till it's done? Who's in charge of this? Who's gonna make sure that the filter's taken, that the water's saved on?
I'm in charge.
That Cory doesn't lose his mind across the water.
Part of the comprehensive plan is they are in charge. And so I can go and pull filters and make sure, because they're supposed to date them when they do it.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying if.
Right. Part of the comprehensive plan. Once you get everything running, it's to their benefit to keep it running because it costs more money if they don't.
For benefit.
Well, still our benefit, not his benefit. He gets paid.
No, no, the companies benefit. Because they're, if it breaks, they have to pay for it. If it's running.
For how long?
For as long as we have the contract.
We have an annual contract.
We have an annual contract.
We're gonna keep that. We're gonna keep that.
But that's.
That's in the budget, it was built into the budget and protected.
Much more cost effectiveness. Do that way than.
It's a big number when you look at it every month, but it's a wild number.
Thirty thousand for a gym.
Thousand dollars, you're always watching this.
Yeah, and that's, that's, it's, it's gonna get, it's gonna be less burdensome. At first it was because I came in here and of course Honeywell isn't gonna go, alright, it's all under comprehensive. I'm maybe with you so far in the hallway as you guys can see. So to, to kinda hold you guys accountable to your equipment and then after you guys, okay, we'll get there with you guys. Then we'll say, alright, thank you, now it's ours and we'll take it. So it is pretty much what she said. That being said, it also is up to the integrity of the individual, period. Just like every job, so, uh, but.
That's why we want you to meet him because he really loves what he does. He's very responsive, he explains everything. And he's, not only will he say, well, Honeywell may not be able to give you the best price on this, you may wanna check. So they're not guaranteed that, like, the cooling tower, so the air got that. Did a better, because it was about a bit, so keeping him honest along the way and he'll do that.
And also, yeah, Robin's bought, and R twenty-two's ridiculous and expensive. So she bought it, so she didn't have to pay Honeywell's market. You know, I mean, I'm not here to steal the school's money for.
And he's been very generous with his time, he really has, he's taken care of us and.
Yeah, fixing ovens is not the.
I was gonna say, he helped me a little bit. He had time with an oven and he can do gas. So he did, and he did it.
Hey, he came to a school board meeting.
Yeah.
Come on. This is not my own time, by the way, I am not getting paid.
Tell you what, Cory leaves. Who's watching that program? So if it's Robin, I feel a little better.
Well, thank you. But Honeywell does have.
Dr. Bell's has it under control.
Honeywell does have a, a tier team. So if Cory does something that makes me not happy, I can call his boss.
No, he seems great.
Yeah, he's great, but I'm just saying, if somebody else came in, because I've worked with some other companies where the people were not impressed with me. And, and I let them know it, they didn't like it, that's one of the reasons why we went with a different company. Because you gotta feel comfortable with who you're dealing with, but you gotta hold them accountable too. And I get Cory grief all the time and he just makes great. But we get along really well and our aim's always the same.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Thanks.
Oh, yeah. I will never achieve Dr. Ageback guy, that's not gonna happen, so. Does anybody, anybody got a question for me besides?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Cory. Good work. I'm gonna leave now, yes?
You're at the back door for what?
Thanks for, thanks for coming out.
You will be here tomorrow. His other account is the jail. He has us in the jail in Rappanigan, jail.
Yeah, and I just put a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar chiller in for them, so.
Regional jail or?
Regional.
Yeah, I'll say it. I have our building.
They add anybody tonight?
He had more than that, but we kept him so busy, they had to cut off some of his other locations to take care of us.
Alright.
Alright. Our next item on the agenda is our, um, notification of our awards for food service bids. So I have our nutrition specialist and food service director, Mandy Grove, here to share that information with you.
Cory, your top act to follow. And then your top act to follow.
Oh. Sorry. Hey, have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. So we'll be sharing, um, who our bids will be awarded to and the companies that we'll be using for the food service program this coming school year. Um, so for the majority of our groceries, they'll be coming from merchants out of Culpeper. Um, this is the same as previous years where we ride the bid along with other local districts. Um, local food hub, this will be new, this will be for our produce. Um, they're based out of Charlottesville and sourced from a lot of local farmers in Virginia, um, a co-op. They go between Harrisonburg and DC, so luckily, um, we'll be able to be on their delivery system to be able to source more local products. Schmidt for bread, Pet Dairy for milk and Garber Ice Cream, which are also returning bids. And for some of our local vandal, vendors, excuse me, that will be continuing for farm to school and hopefully throughout the year as well. Ryder's Beef in Etlin, Thorn River here in Sperrville, Water Penny in Sperrville, and then Survivor Farm, which is in Lorre. For meal prices, DOE, um, sets requirements based on their PLE, Paid Lunch Equity Tool, um, which requires us if we're not meeting the average weighted minimum to raise our prices, lunch prices by at least ten cents. Um, so our lunch prices for elementary and high school will be going up by ten cents, which you can see by the asterisk for this coming school year compared to last school year. They don't require us to change breakfast, so we did wanna keep that the same. Adult lunch prices went up, um, last school year, so we kept that the same. So the only changes will be elementary lunch and high school lunch by ten cents.
Any questions for us?
Any questions?
Nothing new.
It is what it is and, and, uh. What, what's, uh, this might be an awful question, but many districts, uh, what's our salad bar situation? Are we still in that ballgame or, or no?
We are, um, so the high school, we have a salad bar. Um, it started in the spring where we offered it two days.
It's only part of the time though, right?
So in the spring it was, um, Tuesdays and Thursdays, but this coming school year it'll be every day.
Say that again.
It'll be every day at the high school.
Really? Alright, by pound or by the what?
Um, so right now, they meet for the vegetable. Um, they'll, there's, each container is scooped out for grains to make sure, because DOE sets standards on subgroups of vegetables. So the grains are scooped and then from there, they can do over many toppings and then choose a protein source, egg, chicken, tuna, that varies. Um, so that way they still have choice, but in a way, we're still making sure they're meeting all the requirements for it to be a lunch.
So they can come, if you can come in and get a, a kind of a free salad bowl?
Yep, so the clear container has, um, you know, the measured amount of lettuce that we need to give them. Um, and then from there. Right, and then from there, they, it's free to choose toppings.
But then, but, but the question, what, do you pay for by the pound or by the, just the?
It's just by lunch.
Or you could put in the plate.
Whatever you can put in there.
It's a great lunch for twenty-fifty. You get it all the time.
Which has brought a lot more of our staff into buying lunches.
Are we gonna do it in the elementary schools?
So elementary, we're gonna increase again to two days a week and then go from there to hopefully. They can still order salads any day of the week, um, but I wanna increase the days of salad bar, that way they have more choice.
I mean, in my past history, salad bar was the biggest success in middle school that ever happened. I mean, kids were, kids who never ate lunch eat salad bar lunch.
And Karen McCracken is so excited, she, even on the salad bar, I mean, she wants to add a hot section for soups once it gets colder. Um, and really, and even, we're positioning it this coming school year, so even when students get baked potato or sandwiches, if they wanna add on some toppings, lettuce. Yeah, lettuce, tomato, add it on to their sandwich that way, so. Yeah. We're, we're reconstructing.
I'm here for lunch.
We're reconstructing the limited space we have here at the high school to try to make things flow as well as we're giving students choices, so we're excited.
And a lot of that was part of the Commit to Be Fit program promoting all of that in the local food and operating facilities and things. So that's been initiated in that great program.
Thank you.
Great work.
Alright, next I will ask Madam CFO, Stacy Witt, to the podium to talk about our out-of-county tuition rates. That's your local effort amount for out-of-county votes. How it's calculated.
Um, so, no, I can see it, okay. Um, every year, once we, um, have our new budget adopted, we have to go back and reconfigure our numbers to figure out what out-of-county tuition would be for those individuals, um, who don't reside here and want to go to school here. Um, so this year, our student tuition is gonna be seven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-one cents. It is up from last year. Our budget went up, um, our state funds decreased, federal funds decreased, all of that plays a role. Um, so we have to make that money up in this, in the out-of-county tuition because we aren't getting those funds for those kids locally. So they have to pay that portion of it. We, um, transportation gets put into it, into that number, as well as special education. So there's a whole formula that we use to figure it out. Um, and then again, our ADN also plays a role into it as well, so that's what we're gonna finish up.
So there's a separate tuition if we provide special ed services?
Yeah.
Or it's an addendum?
There's an application process, there's numerous factors by policy that we can look at, academic record, attendance, special needs and things like that. And if, um, there are additional needs that we can't cover, yes, they can be added to the tuition cost. Because that would increase your local effort to educate that student who wouldn't be getting back in your federal state budget. Last year we had to have one kid. That's expensive.
It's hard to work for one kid.
Alright, also we have for you on four point five, these are your annual resolutions that you have to approve every year and sign off on. Um, so hopefully you've read those. Do you have any questions about any of those or?
We'll approve those as a slate of resolutions later.
Correct.
Right?
Okay. And lastly, I just wanted to give you an update on our Leadership Academy that we had last month and what we got out of that. Pull up the presentation if you want. She doesn't know they get this.
You know that you're on here, Carol?
Surprise! Hang on, I have to reload it again because the pictures didn't show up when it came over here for some reason. There. It's my favorite picture. So our Leadership Academy was at Graves Mountain on, um, June nineteenth and twentieth. Um, so we made friends with the bear, Carol really liked that bear. Our theme was, don't be busy, be productive. Um, we've cut down quite a bit, um, administration positions, so a lot of us have had to pick up a lot of extra duties and things. So, um, the idea of this professional development for administrators was to make sure we were maximizing our efficiency and productivity, um, realizing where we're most efficient, where, where our roadblocks are and being the most productive we can be with all of those cuts being made. It required quite a bit of attention to that. So what we did on day one was really get into our productivity styles. Um, we used, uh, How to Work Simply and Live Fully. It's a workshop by Carson Tate, um, somebody, a scholar in the business industry who does a lot of the productivity. So I have a couple of those, if you guys wanted to look at those. Um, but we've worked through this workshop to identify and assess our own styles, what strengths we have in those styles, what our blind spots are and how those all fit into communication and different workflow types. And also as your team contributions and things, so that's what we looked at. Um, and we had different activities once we identified what styles we have. And it was really eye-opening. It was one of the ones that I, there's a lot of these out there, different assessments from business, but this one hit the nail on the head almost every time. And I think the team will tell you that, it was amazingly, um, accurate about ourselves and really taking a critical look at yourself and how you're most productive and also what gets in your way. So for instance, prioritizer, there's four different styles. You have prioritizer, planner, arranger, visualizer. A prioritizer, their strengths, very, um, good at critical analysis, they're very goal-oriented, um, but they have some blind spots they have to be aware of and they really like to get things done quickly. So sometimes you can miss some steps that way. They tend to be a little rigid and very competitive. So knowing that a bit as you go into it. Um, and the workshop walks you through understanding those and how they affect workflow and, and things. So it was, it was pretty neat. Um, and who each person was, I will say that I'm, my top two scores were prioritizer and planner, which kinda surprised me, I thought it was a visualizer, but Carol's the only visualizer among us. So it's a good compliment to the prioritizer planner person. So we learned about that and then when you're tackling a project, you know, how a team should be assembled to tackle that. Because if you have all of the ones of the same style, um, I think it was really funny, we were doing one of the activities and the planners, um, the idea was to make an ad about if you were going to attract to your team and what's great about being your, um, productivity style and then what are your blind spots? Well, the arrangers are really artistic and then you kinda see things. So I put theirs up there for a, um, an example, but the planners were so funny, they're like, we were making a list. This was literally a poster with a list and it was so, you know, and they didn't do it on purpose, it's just their style.
So you put all the planning people together?
Right.
All the prior trust people together?
Yes. To understand what the.
So you could see more of that activity.
Yes, and it was neat because some folks were saying, Amy was saying, wow, there's more people like me.
I know, I was like, oh my God, I thought it was only one of them.
What were you, planner?
I, I was a little bit of a planner and arranger. You guessed that, didn't you?
Oh, she said she would buy one more, yes?
But yeah, so, um, that's what we kinda did. And then also we, um, talked together as teams because day two, the idea was to be with different productivity types as we tackled our, um, comprehensive plan. So it was really fun and interesting. So day two, uh, was our comprehensive plan analysis day. Um, so using your productivity style attributes and, um, you assemble teams differently. And we conducted what's called a force field analysis on our, each goal of our strategic plan. And what that does is it really hones into when you're setting your action steps for the coming year based on your comprehensive plan, what are your restraining forces and what are your driving forces? Because meaningful change toward your goal is not going to happen if your restraining force score exceeds your driving force score. And, or if they're equal, you're not really moving anywhere, you're kinda stagnant. So it really takes apart each of those goals strategically that way. Um, and then you plan goals on either reducing your restraining forces or increasing your driving forces, or your steps may be a bit a blend of both because that's the whole idea of your moving towards your goal. Our current comprehensive plan goes to twenty twenty-two. So making, making sure we're making forward progress on these goals and what are measurable action steps using this analysis. So each team took that analysis up, it's a brainstorming activity, you do, you score those and then develop. Here's an example of one of the analysis. Um, goal one, our content knowledge that students will achieve and apply appropriate academic and technical knowledge. Um, so they said some driving forces were, you know, quality instruction and professional development, access to technology, pacing guides, benchmarks. Each one of those carries with it a score about how strong that force is on a scale of one to five. Or one is a not very strong force and five being the strongest force. The team does.
The team.
The team, yes, it's not just a singular person, but the team does. And the way we do that is sort of blind and then you come together and collaborate rather than reach a consensus before because you get some different feedback that way too. And you can consider it all. So then you come up with this and score. So you see on goal one, mm, they're pretty close. So as far as content knowledge, and we do pretty well there. So maybe that is good, that we just wanna maintain. We have goals that we wanna exceed, so some of our goals then, um, they came up with that we wanna do the addition of instructional specialists or coaches, which then led into our teacher leaders program where they wanna develop teacher leaders who are gonna act as instructional coaches in our areas of need. They saw that coming from us. And we did that, so that's gonna be one of our teacher leader positions, reading and math coaches, where some of our best teachers can get a stipend for help vertical align, give strategies, work with those teachers to get, um, additional strategies. Um, developing attendance incentives, increasing enrichment and CTE offerings. So those are the things that came out of it. And then at the bottom of that, um, and all of this will update you much more comprehensively when we give you the strategic plan update. I think that comes up in October, November. And that's part of our biennial update. Um, all of this will be in there for you to view. And then we have our actual outcomes that we're looking at, who's responsible, and then the timeframe. So now we can really measure against each goal we're regarding. And from that, we, um, then develop our individual goals to make sure we're all going in the same direction.
And they're, you know, so reassessing.
Absolutely.
And measuring those at the same time?
Absolutely. Oh, yes, absolutely. And then the afternoon of day two, that was all in the morning we got it done. We worked on workstations that had come up in our administrative cabinet meetings throughout the year that we wanted to delve a little deeper into. So we had a PR digital communications workstation where we had to really choose finally our new motto. Even Spire Row was going to fall to the wayside, we're going to come up with our new one, so we did that. And also Polly's in the process of developing a brochure booklet advertising publication. So we had a sample one that we found actually from the governor's office that we loved and it just had the components and format that had a lot of, you know, good inspiration. So we let the team kind of tear that apart, what they liked, what should be included and things like that. We had a restorative justice workstation where, Ms. Carol, this is her Bailey Wake, had some administrative work on that because that's an area we're implementing as part of our safety plan and part of kind of that social work umbrella that we were talking about before and restored practices in schools. Mentorship, we're revamping a little bit about our mentorship program too. Teacher leaders program, we wanted to assess how our leaders did this past year and then what's also needed. As part of that workstation, we looked at our tax survey, the exit survey. All teachers were given this survey to assess different things throughout their year. Scores were really great and for the first time ever that I've ever seen, because we've done surveys similarly, central office administrative staff was ranked as a positive influence and very supportive, 100% of hope there. It's like, whoa, never seen that happen. And the building administrative team too, they were ranked super high. So that was a mission of ours really to have them see us, not as a enemy or ivory tower mentality, but as customer service, we're here to support you and help you be successful. So that was great to see. And that helped a lot with our teacher leader development. And then athletics, we had done an athletics survey that gave us a lot of great information about how we're assessing and sports and all these different things. So we use that survey to guide how we're going to approach athletics this year, some evaluation stuff, handbooks, parent meetings, a whole, all suite of things, so.
Do you think we could do the athletics survey?
We put that out everywhere. So it was for all of us, parents, students, faculty, it was out.
It was available on paper as well as online. General community, it was out for about three weeks.
A reasonable number of.
Yes, yeah, we have high response rate. Don't remember the rank number off the top of my head, but quite amusing.
But if you'd like that, we can, we can live that. But it helped us get some good information about where we need to head next year. I mean, we have a lot of goals about bringing our parents back on board with us and hopefully getting a booster club started again and really engaging our families back into their sports program. We have so many and we have some great, great middle school parents coming up who are so on fire for athletics and just keeping that momentum going. So we're really tapping into that.
Have to be welcomed, you know?
Absolutely. So that's where we're heading there. So it was very productive. And I wanted to put our new motto up here because we had to announce that we finally got it. The one that won out on the survey, this was another one of Polly's surveys, her PR committee went out and conducted this. So it's an acronym actually of what Rapid County Public Schools, other than what that stands for, is respect, community, pride, and success. And that by far was the top rank, so we went with what our stakeholders wanted, so that's our new motto. And then finally, our admin 2018 PLC, we're going to be reading Leaders Eat Last by Simon Sinek, so it's a really good leadership book. Oh, look, I've definitely read it. Jimmy's been reading it quite a bit. So a lot of great stuff in here. Throughout the year, we're going to look back at our leadership style and how we're aligning, how this book fits in and drawing inspiration from that and stuff. It was a very busy couple of days and we got a lot out of it.
And it was not facilitated? The leadership team executed the whole thing on their own?
Yeah.
Yep.
And that concludes the reports in the superintendent.
Exciting. The team got closer together.
Yes, we did.
They understand each other better and.
Drive back and forth or just go?
We drove.
Great.
That seemed better.
It was, it was very nice. The venue was nice, the food was really good and it was a great place, really great place. Other school districts have done that, I know. Dr. Boltz had told us that Culpeper was doing air retreats there quite a bit, so we looked into it and it was very positive, yeah.
Great. Alright, thank you. Our Hitler reference not here, did you go to that?
I did. Do you have a?
No, I wasn't there.
Here's our Hitler.
I was there, yeah.
I was at the beach.
Um, what we had talked about there was an update on the chorus program, I remember that, and it was awesome. Not to say that because I'm a parent of a student.
Especially well-known.
Oh my gosh, it was incredible.
It was fun.
It was so fun. But the music that they were able to accomplish in nine days of work with these professionals was incredible. I could not believe it. I want to hear it. I do too. And my daughter loved it.
Well, you can only do it in a time when your people can do it because they're donating their time.
Right.
I know, I realize that, but it would be nice if I could tell them.
It was wonderful. It was really.
They even donated the instrument.
Yeah. It was incredible. So they talked about that, it was very successful.
It was country days.
We also had, June 23rd was their trip for all the honor roll students, took them to the Nats game. I was the first one to sign up as a chaperone for that, having a daughter on honor roll too.
That was a super long day though, wasn't it?
It was awesome.
More than just the Nats game.
Yeah, we got to see the Capitol. Mm-hmm. Got to see. It was. But it was, the kids were all fine. It was a, it was a good trip. Yeah, we loved it a lot.
Next year, you take air conditioning lessons.
Hey, there we go, yeah.
We have them.
No, it wasn't bad. And then they talked about they're going to start their strategic planning, so we'll be in touch with different stakeholders to provide input there and that's where they're heading now. Taste of Rapid County September 8th, probably. I'm pulling all this, so I think that's true.
Eight or nine.
I think it's eight, is that Saturday? So was he looking forward to that?
That's the eight, yeah.
Like, remember.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Grove?
We didn't do.
And me?
I'm sure.
Is there any discussion items from the board? Is there anyone for public comment? Anybody?